Here this morning, we've got a good agenda of different elements coming through. So just checking on the last meeting around the minutes first of all and accuracy. The I know they were sent out good time. Any issues on the minutes tool from the last meeting is where I go to? If not, I'll sign them up as accurate and correct, not getting any shakes of heads. Yep, compute. And just moving on then to any outstanding actions as for section nineteen or page nineteen.
So I was just gonna say, um, did you wanna look at the other minutes?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, my fault. Yeah. Apologies. So looking at the, um, the board on the ninth of August then, any issues of those at all? We'll take the factor I could see. No. And then finally, the financials of all the committees which they have got future.
I did.
And again, any things about factor I could see on there? No? All good. Thank you for that. And thanks for all the getting those out. That's very appreciated. So, um, moving on to outstanding actions then. So five-year pay pensions and pay.
Okay, sure. Thank you. So, so this item, um, uh, previously to describe that whilst we were in a good position as a, as a service, there were issues and challenges around HMI, HMRC, uh, regulations and requirement for law change in order to process this. And as a result of the, the election that was, uh, been deferred for a little while, that since the new government has, um, has been introduced, has picked up again and is, is making progress through the requisite parliaments to make those changes to, to taxation law. Um, but we are in a position, that's what we, we require to do as an organisation to process any of these claims and to work the workings out. Have all been done internally and passed to our pensions provider, Rundekun, Rundekun and Taff for them to process in, in, you know, as soon as the, the law changed. There is a letter that is in as well from HMRC, we're told, which gives approval to process those people with immediate detriment.
I think there's, um, in the, in the old days, sorting out pensions is quite a straightforward thing. And then sorting out pensions nowadays is a very complicated matter.
Yes.
Very individualised and there are lots of, um, sort of bigger points on this. So I'm going to score the amount of work that's required. I think, you know, some members of staff who feel they may be lost at what immediate answers and those immediate answers can't always be brought forward because there's a lot of work contained within individualising the responses back.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And any idea, I'll, I'll be throwing a bit of work, but timescales to be.
The original timescales, I think we're back in line with, which was eighteen months from the point.
So October twenty twenty-five was the end, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're, we're back in line with those timescales, the delays that were predicted as a result of legislation change. I think we're catching up and things are moving through more quickly. As I said, we've done all that we need to do. And it's not just now just waiting for that letter from HMRC change, which is in the, uh, well, from, from action on this, this meeting. It's, it's one that's on action from previous, um, previous regimes and ultimately it's just to close it off the day before.
So comfortable to discharge and we'll just monitor through?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, happy. Thank you. Fabulous. Thank you very much for that. Uh, so moving on to the, the formal agenda items then first of all, so Wayne, Dominic.
Yeah, I'll be presenting that one. Um, yeah, so this is a report for decision and what we do in this report, obviously, we, we do, um, as an organisation, we are expected to produce and publish an annual improvement plan, which was primarily a backward look on performance in twenty-three, twenty-four. An element in our plan is proposing strategic themes and even objectives for consultation. So we have a statutory consultation of twelve weeks that we undertake with, with a vast array of stakeholders. Um, so to this meeting, so this paper is really to give an overview of what those strategic themes are. Uh, what the board level improvement objective will be that we'll be consulting on for twelve weeks. Um, to accompany this paper, obviously, there are two appendices. The first one is a report where we will overview the commissioners of where, where the strategic themes have come from. And we've tried to provide assurance that they do link in the Future Generations Act. They do, uh, link in with, uh, out into the National Fire Framework. And we've obviously, um, in recent time, looked at the Step Forward Transformation Programme and the nine sort of themes there. Make sure that is what we're doing and what we're proposing and can everything we are proposing to do be aligned accurately under there? Um, they've been, and improvement projects have been amended very slightly. Uh, and then there's a second appendix then where we've done a pre-consultation with, with key stakeholders and staff. So we use this stakeholder register and key partners and general staff consultation, which is a three-week consultation. And that will present the results of the consultation and there'll be a future planning meeting. So the, um, the recommendations here, that today we approved the strategic themes of being a fit for the purpose for consultation at least. And the, and the, and the objective is to go with them. Um, and the second recommendation here, we've asked for a delegation to the Director of Strategic Change and Transformation and myself to review and refine any draft themes and objectives. And like I mentioned, we are also going through planning meetings. There are things that are kind of subject to change from now and then. Um, so yeah, if any major objective will be, that needs to be put in there. It's, it's just a delegated authority for that. But I guess the publication of these objectives twenty-five, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six. So obviously there'll be many opportunities between now and then to review and review every line of course. That was, that was a potential, which is not all within the papers, quite extensive.
Thank you, Wayne.
I think we brought it up at the last meeting, was make sure that yourself had a time in all these things. So this is a living document which will be updated as work on transformation and the culture review proceeds.
Yeah, yeah, hundred percent. So the, so for the annual improvement plan, it is in draft now. We'll be bringing it up to you, I think, in a meeting in October prior to publication. Um, but obviously, while that's got a real backward looking in what we're doing, um, the objectives themselves in the actual improvement plan have got a little bit depth and detail in terms of what they all mean and what type of projects we're, we're underpinning them. Yes, the Step Forward Programme is definitely something we're making sure that there is, that is not an add-on, but it's woven right the way through what we're trying to achieve. Obviously with the thematic improvements and the, yeah, more of a port and the Step Forward Programme, we, we, they're obviously going to be our priorities, which is making sure that these improvement objectives, all that work can, can align, align to them. Um, yeah, this is just a case of going to get through the consultation, trying to get the, the stakeholders to make sure that we're not just planning an explanation.
Thanks.
Good. What's it about?
I'll make anything useful down.
Yeah, so for myself, obviously, there's, there's a long-term planning piece here within the strategy, within those themes. We try to keep those broadly consistent. Uh, as Wayne articulated, there is that focus on change from the transformation programme and what we've identified as key objectives and projects to, of that forwarding, including the thematic, and then we'll all bring that improvement, uh, plan that we move forward. And then we're looking at how we review that, just to make sure that we are, that the first and our copy of our three last three priorities work for us. So we're looking for planning windows to, to achieve that and any change, so it's very much a live document consultation. Uh, that we already got for those.
And a lot of, you know, external consultation now, what does that look like at this stage, Wayne?
So we do have a, a plan that's currently in draft for consultation with the public. Obviously, we start with our own staff. Uh, we've ordered that then to a stakeholder register, which we, we build at events. So we, anyway, so then we ask, we do ask, we want to be part of any future consultation. Uh, they can opt into that. I think that list is, is, is still, is still quite healthy. Uh, where we should look at then a calendar of public-facing events, um, any partnership, partnerships. We know of any people that stakeholders in similar roles, any, uh, links we have with, um, other working groups throughout the stations. We try and make sure that, that this consultation can feed some of those meetings as well. Um, and like I said, it's just a case of particularly our public facing events, we will see, we will see more forecasting people that don't even know. And we're trying to take that consultation there, um, advertising as much as we can, obviously on social media. Um, not to be reviewed periodically, and if we're not getting responsible, then we may think we may remain and consider maybe advertising and. Probably in more areas, but a consultation piece, as I said, is somewhere to look out, work on, trying to engage with that.
I suppose Laura, you know, more broad pace here is, is that the risk around consultation overload for the organisation, isn't it? When, when you look at HMRC and RSD, there's a real risk, isn't it, that can you fill out something else and the important stuff gets missed, doesn't it?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, something we need to consider based on the activity that we did last year and then like the evaluation that we did afterwards. So. Okay.
Now, um, I'm particularly pleased at the ongoing engagement with this report because this is something I asked in the meeting when we were, that we did. So I'm, I'm pleased to see it's happening and I'm pleased to see the, the changes and the development. Um, and, you know, I don't have any comments on the layout, but I think it's, it's as good as it can be. There's always ways of making improvements, but it's this idea that's been grasped now that we need to keep looking at and reviewing what we're doing. And ensuring we include, as, you know, as others have said, uh, what's gone before, but, but it's keeping that monitoring. So it's things just are not launched and presented without us knowing how it's happening. In, in, so work in progress, I think is very important.
So any other questions anybody else wanted to raise, any point? So that I think there's two specific acts. Uh, so it's the.
So just on, when we look at the level of consultation responses, are they statistically insignificant? I mean, would, if we were going to make any changes to the things that we do, are they of a volume enough to demonstrate, you know, significant desire to move in something? Because they seem quite low.
Yeah, the pre, the pre-consultation is, is to a very small and targeted group, I think, because obviously decisions are at such a formative stage in that we go to stakeholders who either show an invested interest or who do have that, that background in, in the fire rescue services. So as I said, staff and, and, yeah, staff and no partners. So I think that the pool of individuals is a lot lower in the pre-consultation. That's more just to give people that opportunity. There's probably more of a gap analysis where if something does start rearing its head that we haven't factored into the planning, we go into our planning meetings with the service, service leaders and we do say, there was an overwhelming response to this, so have you considered this into your planning? Or an accessory procedure, we can, we can factor that into the planning at least, have that conversation. It's a, it's a different way of thinking. But, um, you're right, in terms of the public, we have looked at statistical significance. Um, I would, I'll be honest, in the last year or two, as I mentioned, the potential consultation fatigue and they're one of the things we have been asking people. We probably haven't had a statistical significant response probably in the last two years. I think the number for one point five million people, don't quote, probably in the six, seven hundreds, six, seven, eight hundreds. We, we have fallen short to that last year or two. So I think it is a big piece of work for us to try and promote that response, to try and get people interested. But like I mentioned, we, we did ask a lot of people, a lot of things last year. So I think people had so many opinions, their views and their opinions. I think probably people took different avenues rather than coming through this consultation.
But you wouldn't be alone in public service in terms of trying to get, particularly in the public, you'd get institutions to reply to you. But members in the public are more difficult. Um, unfortunately, we've gone down this alley in recent years of the Facebook page, haven't we? Where everyone's got an opinion about everything on that, as long as we're using our social media appropriately and taking that into account. Because, you know, we will have, there can be, um, those who shout the loudest then. I think we're very aware of that. Um, you know, that the silent majority needs to have a view as well. That is always expressed in those fora.
Kirsty, chief.
I, I just wanted, I think what struck me most about it in responses that have come back is that you can bucket them, can't you, into broad themes? But the overwhelming theme is communication.
Yeah.
And I think that's what stands out for me is, uh, as an organisation, we have to, you know, redouble our efforts in, at communication uh, with our staff and externally. And I think, you know, we need to, um, you know, as we move forward with our new, you know, director of comms, they can pick up on that because it seems to me that's the overwhelming message that I see from the feedback is people don't feel that we are communicating what we do and our, and our policy and our changes and our, our transformation as well as we should be. So I think that's, that's to me, it's comment rather than a question.
Yeah, my observation, it's already been said, Lady Will Cox picked up what I was going to say in relation to it's not unusual in terms of our historical experience of consultations and, uh, low take-up rate from the public. We do get a relatively good uptake though from institutions and, and organisations to represent, um, you know, from a local authority perspective and other, other partners in that regard, we do get a good feedback in from those groups. But it is a challenge constantly and all the things that Kirsty just said, learning will help us if we can move forward to improve those numbers. But then we have to, to accept the reality that, that it is a challenge.
Yeah.
Fabulous. And I'll just appoint for me both of those themes in terms of the consultation and need to make that a bit more robust and detailed and the communication bit are picked up in the key themes for the improvement plan. So they are definitely something that we are considering for those two areas.
Fabulous. So two elements. First of all, report and to go on to that consultation piece, which was the first ask from us, but not sign off before the ask, sign off, it is the ask for consultation. If you're comfortable, that would be good. Thanks. And the second one is that if there are minor changes, that delegation of authority, don't yourselves tweak that plan as it comes through before it comes back to us.
Great. Yeah, agree. Yeah.
Fabulous. Thank you, Wayne. Three questions in time. Fabulous. So moving on then, moving on to, um, item seven, which is the Health and Safety Annual Report.
I'll be myself, chief. So this is the annual report, the Health, Safety and Wellbeing Team. The improvement commissioners, um, we will then publish this on our front-facing public internet site, uh, just for everyone's awareness. Now, the report itself, um, provides a summary statement from myself on page fifty-two of the document bundle. That just provides a strategic overview of, um, what team was undertaking over the last twelve months. And a little bit of a view forward as well. That provides an executive summary and the data within the following pages gives us the statistical information that the Health and Safety Team are linked on our behalf. And also some other, uh, programmed work streams that the team have been involved in, just within the Health and Safety team responsibilities and the, of the team. Uh, on page fifty-four, it just gives a little bit of an overview in terms of the data and statistical information. In particular around, uh, seventy-nine accidents have been recorded within that financial year within the service. Forty-eight illnesses, fifty-one health and safety inspectors were conducted across the, this footprint of the, of the service. And they regulated and referenced one hundred and seventy-nine risk assessments, uh, that are within the library, uh, that the Health and Safety Team manage on our behalf. Um, in terms, just a little bit of context around some of that data, so page fifty-five just gives us some accident and injury figures. So you'll see that, uh, there's been an increase in the number of reported accidents within that financial year, a last seventy-nine in total. Uh, when you look across the history of the service over the past four years, you can see that it has been a rise there. That's been attributed to a, probably a more positive culture of our staff reporting the minor injuries and accidents that occur across the service. Because I think historically, we've recognised that not every individual was under confidence to report all the minor injuries and accidents that has occurred. So there's been an element of focus over that yearly period, uh, to address that. And that's why we are now seeing an increase in the number of reported, um, accidents across the areas. Out of those seventy-nine, there's two that have been categorised as, as major. That's just down to the time lost through those two injuries. And that's been attributed to, um, ones of operational, uh, member of staff tripped over in an appliance bay. And the second one was a run-through of a fire station which, which somebody incurred a, a knee injury. But those two have been categorised as major just because of the time lost due to those two injuries. Um, over seven days injuries, that's increased in terms of our reporting and there's twenty of those instances. That has then, um, allowed the team to report from under the Riddell Regulations. So you'll see that within the data, there's been an increase in Riddell reporting, but it's because of, uh, we're seeing more over seven day absences from the workplace, which means we then have to notify, uh, Riddell and our statutory duties. Um, out of the time lost, I think it's key to just point out on proper page fifty-seven, that out of them seventy-nine accidents and injuries that have been reported, fifty-three of those resulted in long time loss from any member of staff. So they are just minor, um, injuries and accidents, but those individuals then remain within the list. Uh, I've mentioned the Riddell, uh, reporting, that's on page fifty-eight, it's at the top there. Uh, just to give you the confidence that we are aligned to legislation. And at the bottom of page fifty-eight, you see from the duty system, um, that whole time, the category full-time active reporting is obviously the highest valid and that's just consistent with, with year on year, uh, because of the staff numbers representative within the whole time duty system. On page sixty, just gives a bit of indication around the types of injuries that are being reported. Uh, the highest category, a large proportion of injury being reported are aches, pains, a jar of the note visible injuries. So that relates to the minor injuries that we are seeing being reported. And the second highest category, that's cuts of abrasions and punctures. Just drilling down a little bit of that information. Page sixty-one then gives us a pipeline around causes of the injuries and the highest level of categorisations. That gives us some understanding, uh, of, of why these injuries are being caused. Um, and the highest category, they're slip trips or falls on the same level. Followed second by contact with sharp objects, uh, slices and punctures. Just over the page, on page sixty-two, just a reference, you'll see there are accidents across sites, that highest proportion there. Sixteen within Cardiff Gate Training Centre. So there's work that the team have been doing with Cardiff Gate. I mean, there isn't accepted that there's a higher level of risk at Cardiff Gate because we are exposing individuals to a higher degree of training and exposure. Um, so, but a lot of those, uh, sixteen cases there, with minor trips, slips and falls and some of the minor injuries that we've seen recorded, nothing of significant nature. Uh, on page sixty-three, just at the top there, it gives a bit of a graph around activity being undertaken. And all this shows us is that our operational incidents in terms of accident reported and injuries are quite consistently low. So only sixteen out of seventy-nine were on the, on the incident ground. It just shows the level of supervision and extra mitigation has been put in place across the, the incident ground. Most of them tend to be where staff are more in a relaxed environment, just undertaking routine duties, um, and, and training uh, and other activities across the service. Just on page sixty-six, gives a little bit of an insurance update. So you can see there, it gives a categorisation of employer and public liability claims, uh, services being undertaken. Um, and during that financial year, there were a total of three, um, employer liability claims, uh, that our insurance departments, uh, managed to conclude on. You can see that the costs have decreased, uh, incomparable to the, to the previous years as well. Well, page sixty-seven just gives a little bit of, uh, information around the comparative across Wales and the, the fire and rescue services. Uh, you see now a number of accidents are higher than the other two services. Uh, a Riddell reporting that is consistently high as well. Uh, but our near misses, if you, if you look at the graph there, we are the lowest reporting of near misses across the three services. Um, so that's an area of focus that we try to change that culture and, and give the confidence to staff to come forward and notify us when there's been one near miss. That allows us the ability to then, to get kind of a step in place to ensure that, um, we're keeping our staff as safe as possible. So that's one of the program streams that the, the Health and Safety Team will be picking up from, from this calendar year. So then just from page sixty-eight, always give a, give a little bit of a programme of works, um, of what the, of the responsibilities that the Health and Safety and Wellbeing Team have been picking up on. Workplace inspections, fifty-one, well, that's every workplace is, uh, was anything over the risk inspection. Has it forty-one in Norway who identifies through those fifteen inspections? With a, with a gulf and majority of being resolved. There's still a few outstanding, they start with the business, uh, with the building maintenance and facilities team to, to undertake. Uh, the risk assessment, so they do a review of the current library of risk assessments and the live ones that come in from our staff. Um, and a significant number of those being resumed. Inductions and DSE assessments, um, they've integrated a He-Help Learning Platform Package, which is there for every staff member, that's an annual subscription for staff to go through. So we can understand that they've undertaken some of the learning packages and, and the education that they need. Uh, just to keep all our members of staff safe, including our corporate members of staff. Um, on page sixteen-nine, just gives a little bit of a positive example of some of the work that the Health and Safety Team do. Um, this is around noise and vibration assessments. And this relates to the driver training team at Cardiff Gate. Higher levels of exposure in terms of noise from several hours per day sat in vehicles with green lights and sirens flowing. So there's been some good work there that's been undertaken by the team, uh, which resulted in also efficient equipment that the driver training team are now utilising, uh, just to make sure that we're looking after their wellbeing going forward. Um, there's also a, a bit of evidence there around, uh, HAVS reports references, which is a hand, arm vibration, um, assessment. And this is related to our HR fleet staff, where they're utilising lots of power tools and hydraulic tools with a vibration element to it. So the, the, the team have been engineering and innovating in around what's available to, to look at. What's the exposure limits, the vibration, et cetera. Uh, and we're in the process of going to be trying it. It's like a wristwatch that our staff will wear. And it'll record the amount of exposure time that they, that they undertake with power tools, et cetera. And then you can manage and limit, uh, parameters of, of when they're being exposed to those types of tools. Just to bring down that handout vibration element. Um, the wellbeing steering group is just referenced on page seventy-one, it was part of the, that updated of the, um, committees of structures across the service. That one has now been changed to our Health and Safety Group. Uh, encompasses a few other, of new extremes that have been carried out around the service. That's now been picked up and chaired by someone from our HR department. Then you've gone to the bottom there, plans and objectives for the following year and it gives us a little reference, you know, around maintaining standards of health and safety, a little bit of a team structure development. So I think it's just noteworthy to give you a position of where we are with the Health and Safety Team, if you're current for life. So the team structure at the moment, uh, there's a permanent vacancy for the Health and Safety Team Manager. And the assistant manager's role is also vacant. Uh, that's as a result of various, um, reasons. There's been prolonged periods of sickness within the department, particularly at those two positions. Uh, they're in a, in a permanent vacancy. We've undertaken two recruitment, um, opportunities for the Health and Safety Team Manager's role. Uh, both are, through both processes, uh, we've not had any appointable candidates. Uh, the most recent was completed around about two weeks ago. So, uh, area manager Chris had feelings working with our colleagues in, in HR at the moment to undertake probably a job evaluation of that role. Because I think what we're seeing is a competing demand across the industry, um, where we might not be attracting the right individuals to those roles. Um, and the financial elements that those sit alongside that role. So there'll be a full job evaluation. He's also exploring other areas, looking at our blue light partners, uh, some local authorities in terms of support mechanisms that they can provide us with expertise. But we've also got the option of have drafted in external consultants more recently to help us understand our Health and Safety Team Department, the risk assessment, uh, processes. Um, and more importantly, the team structure and the accredited positions that we need for the management side of organisation. So they're in the process of writing a full report of what we do with us in, in due course, we've got a draft. Uh, it just made a few final tweaks, but some of that information will utilise then to, to hopefully recruit a suitable candidate for the role of the Health and Safety Team Manager. But it is a challenge at the moment for the team down there. So you'll see several references within the report where the team are referencing a challenging year for the team and that's the reason why.
So thank you, Chief. Dean, thank you. Really comprehensive update. Really appreciate that. So questions and thoughts? One, Kirsty?
Thank you so much, Dean. I just wondered, um, quite understandably and logically, there's a very, very strong focus in the report on physical health. Uh, but if you look back to the previous paper about valuing our staff, we talked about happy, healthy staff. And I'm just wondering, maybe it's been picked up by the wellbeing. And I'm just wondering, maybe it's been picked up by the wellbeing, wellbeing about how we are supporting our staff's mental health and valuing and having a parity between physical and mental health. And and also I do wonder, you know, we're quite a large employer and the future wellbeing and generation, future of wellbeing generations, generations, I can't remember the name there. But you know what I mean? Talks about creating a healthier Wales. And I'm just wondering whether we feel we have a corporate responsibility around health promotion and early intervention. So I'm just thinking about, obviously there's a big focus on physical fitness, but I'm thinking about are we encouraging our staff to undertake their bowel screening tests? Are we encouraging our staff to undertake their vital screening and breath screening tests? Are we encouraging our staff to, you know, be prostate health aware? So, you know, what 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 can we do in the wider sense to keep our our staff, our staff well and a focus on health promotion and early intervention across across the piece really? So not just about the environment which we're doing our job, because clearly that's very well covered. But I just do think we're, we've got an opportunity, haven't we? As a significant civic organization to really support health promotion and early intervention as well.
No, thank you, Kirsty. It's a great observation. I feel what the report doesn't, what this report doesn't hit upon, I guess, is our health and the delivery group that I talked about. So that group reports myself under the Health and Safety Wellbeing Committee, which we've already put in place and restructured more recently. That group works very closely with our occupational health unit and also other elements within the H R departments to look at that mental health and wellbeing and elements of the workforce as well. So there's a great deal of work going on there that I've not had the opportunity to capture, place into this into this report. But I think going forward would be that the aim and the ambition is that we can capture that information within this annual report. So being publicized and everyone can see the the great work that's going on in in those areas. Notwithstanding the challenges that come with that information and collecting that information. I think we've moved on leaps and bounds as an organization, particularly around the mental and wellbeing of our staff. And the referrals to our occupational health team has increased as a result, I guess, of our confidence of staff being able to think that there are support mechanisms out there to to help achieve, you know, more positive outcome for our staff. But there is there is the ability and the options in around reporting some of that information. And I guess that will come through my committee into S L T and then up yourselves. So I can give you more bespoke information around your health and wellbeing.
Yeah, I mean, certainly that's that's very much the intention of the of the structure and committee that are in place. I think that there's a really good point about that. Getting ahead of things in terms of prevention and promotion of 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 good health options and good health choices. I know that is certainly something that's an aspiration for the occupational health team to get more in, rather than being quite so reactive in terms of just dealing with referrals and things that are coming through to them. They do have an aspiration to get ahead of that. I think that the work that H R are doing in conjunction with occupational health around reorganization of priorities and and areas that are going on within the occupational health team will free up some capacity. The other thing, of course, is now the doctor, who is the occupational health unit for us, now attends the the health group. So that that sort of synergy is there moving forward. So so all of the things that you've raised there are the aspiration for that.
Can I just add on that if I if I may, Chair? So I can give some good examples of that because I used to chair that group and we're really proactive in that area. It's well represented across the service from our health, fitness advisors, the nurses, the the doctor now. So we managed to secure funding for that group to support the initiatives that were coming through. So last year, for example, we funded open water swimming, which was a walk for staff that were really suffering with their mental health. Exposure to water and cold water and that really good feedback in that. We'd done a number of prostate awareness sessions in headquarters for all staff to attend. And then there was a series of program workshops which David Cruz was going to be leading on, which were going to go around the service, including headquarters, which would have particular themes around health and fitness and mental health and fitness and psychological and physiological health and fitness. So all that was programmed in. So it's a very proactive group. And, you know, the details there and the supports there and the financial support services there. And so we are pretty proactive in that area, but there's always room for improvement.
So is there, and there's other questions coming around, but is there an action then on that issue then, rather than waiting another twelve months to the health and that we ask an update from that particular group around the activity that's going on, aspiration for the future, etcetera, etcetera, come to us? Three months, Dean?
Yeah, let's do that.
That'll be you're going to find to get that in place. Happy with that?
It'd be really good to highlight and to have assurance that that all that, if you know.
And also, as you said, Ron, the celebrating some of the successes that's going on. And why wouldn't we want to hear about it and kind of let people know? Absolutely. So some questions? Page, sorry, Kirsty.
So I'm going to the occupational health unit, so I'm going to know some of the stuff is is coming, but also interested as well. Is the the information, the data sets from the occupational health unit, does that feed into the program of work in terms of some of the topic areas we might want to go to that? And also, I can see that contaminants, which I've heard a lot about sitting in this, I'm sure we're working, but is it part of the program?
Yes, it is, yeah. So there's a separate working group that's been set up purely on contaminants. And that's still being chaired by an area manager, just because of the level of strategic overview that that group now currently is going forward. And there's a full team there with lots of stakeholders all across the service tied into that as well. Occupational health being one in particular. And then our ops risk management team and the several members of that sat within that working group as well.
Right, so the stats and data from the occupational health unit would be into the program. So that was one question. The other one was, when I looked at the the activity areas being undertaken where the accidents happen, essentially the three areas where we've got absolute control, which are health and duties, training and training exercises, a count of forty six of the accidents and thirty three in areas where we would have less control, I do, you know, operations and so forth. But I just wonder why the areas where we've got most control, we're getting the most accidents is is one part of questions. And the second part is when we talked earlier about, so I guess that's that's the issue about control. Another example would be where we've got higher reporting, which is really good when it comes to lower level incidents. But we've actually got a significant increase in riddle, which would mean that's not about reporting, that's about actual accidents, isn't it? So I guess it's the thing that we've got more riddle accidents and yet we've got more accidents in the areas where we control.
Yeah, maybe just a bit of content for that. So the seventy nine accidents through the financial year were reported fifty three or sixty seven percent of those people stayed in work. So out of those, they were a small proportion, so thirty three percent. Over that thirty three percent, twenty of those were where people were off work consecutively for more than seven days.
Right.
That's the report you mentioned, the riddle. So it wasn't necessarily significant injuries or accidents. It's just because they've gone past the seven consecutively working days.
Right. And would you also, you think that, I mean, I know we have reported against, you know, Wales, but would we be special having comparative against family groups? Because they're more like for like, because you've got the different relationship, the number of whole time and on calls, different sort of structures and sizes of all. Because, I mean, the ones said with North Wales, that's we went pro rata. Their their near misses are even higher proportion than others. I don't know. Just wonder if whether we have a comparison later, looking to get anything statistically.
It'd probably be worth to have a look at, you know, so maybe we could action and take a look at, maybe drill down a little bit more into the data and we're going to win. But I think we've got that explanation.
Yeah, we should. Yeah, we have the context of the family groups as well. See, we can, if we don't have, we can see.
Yeah, so maybe we can have that.
Yeah, so put in that excellent context, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just Dean, just in terms of the world in which we live in, in terms of social partnership, you know, because that's a huge initiative from the Welsh government. Any engagement with the unions about this? Because I know health and safety is a massive issue for our union colleagues. I just wondered. I may have missed it, but I couldn't find anything.
Yes, it was part of the health and safety committee. So the rep bodies are all invited to come and sit and be rep for the committee. I think there's not consistent attendance. That's one finding.
But the offer is always there.
The offer is always there, always invited.
There you go.
We had attendance at the last committee, but the previous two, we didn't have any representation there. Which is, yes, something like communicate with the rep bodies on a regular basis, or all I could do is invite.
That's okay, as long as the door is open and where they choose to take it. But I mean, it is, you know, again, I'm thinking of the education context. I remember if we had an accident at school, you know, the unions would be very involved. So I'm just taking something from, you know, decades ago now, but yeah, as long as they're invited, but I guess the follow up is if they don't come, then you let them know that they haven't come or they have minutes or, you know, how's the communication?
No, that's a fair point, Lady Wilcox. Yes, we make sure that I always communicate with them following the committee if they've not attended.
Okay.
Not necessarily with the health and safety rep from C F B, for instance.
Yes.
I'll go to probably the chair and say that we've got reps and take.
Yeah.
So that's for them to then
Yeah.
check through their own practice.
Like a rigid trainers followed.
Yeah, but then everybody is followed up with full minutes, even ensuring that every attendee on the list
Yes.
receives full minutes of the committee meeting as well.
That's great. Thank you very much.
I think.
Yeah, as you're going to say, that that often we find with the with health and safety reps, there's a bit of churn in in relation to to reps are very, there's reps for different things, as you know. And the health and safety rep often moves up into maybe a secondary role or a brigade official role that's a different role. And so that churn is something that that sometimes they find difficult to keep up with and do the doing the training and so on. But I think we can probably do more to make them aware and 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 of the importance of attendance. I think one of the things I wanted to 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 highlight, Chair, was in relation to to near miss reporting. I think that Dean's already articulated that we've had some success for people reporting minor injuries more readily. Or in any organization that has a positive health and safety culture, then there's high levels of near miss reporting because ultimately if you report more incidents, then it mitigates the accident from happening in the first place. And it's the it's the measure to reduce accidents from taking place, isn't it? So I think it's an area of focus for us, particularly when we see the the levels in as I have some personal experience about about the the level of campaign activity that's in place there to get those levels up, because we were in a similar place in North Wales in terms of low levels of of reporting. There's massive amount of work that was done around education and awareness around what constitutes a near miss, the importance of near miss reporting and and putting the mechanisms in place to make that a simple process. I think often people are put off from reporting near misses because there's empty forms to fill in and then it's quite a complex process. If we do that in a really, you know, time friendly way, then it does encourage. So I think it's an area of focus for us that we could certainly have a look at in a bit to reduce all that to move forward.
I'm sorry, Richard, but do we think there's a link between the near miss piece and the ops issue? Because obviously there's really low ops recordings, isn't it? And that might be the case. But it just feels a little bit odd that we've got very low near miss reported, very low op reported as well, with the same plan. I don't wonder with the North Wales, for example, whether you see a higher level of ops reporting under their near misses. I don't know, but it just feels a little bit.
I think it probably, it probably is linked to to, you know, an over potentially over complicated process or something that could be simplified in 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 previous experience. It moved away from having to fill in a complex form through making a phone call. You know, you make a phone call and it's recorded and then it it sort of it's in the system. So I think that there's a there's a piece of wisdom across the piece really in terms of that simplification process. I think that the thing that I was mentioned was Dean's articulated the challenges that have been in place around recruiting a health and safety manager. And that's not unusual either. I think that that's happening across the piece in terms of that that skill set that was required being quite in in demand. It tends to find that with all the specialism roles that we're looking to recruit into. One of the things that that we might look at or might need to look at is recruiting somebody as a developmental role. So rather than recruiting the finished article, recruit somebody with an aspiration and a career path to achieving that with pay increments along the way. So that as they achieve that particular qualification, they move through and so on. So that's something that's done in in North Wales as well that helped with with getting over that barrier where somebody who had the potential, that's true. They didn't support the external consultant to provide that technical expertise in the interim until the person was up to the appropriate level and that worked quite well. So just just innovative creative solutions that may be thinking a little bit differently when we're challenged to get the right person immediately.
Sorry, apprenticeship comes to mind when you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Very much so. I think it was one thing to point out, Dean.
I think so. I think, you know, that's that that team issue, isn't it? It's really crucial, isn't it? And having that lack of competency in each ship in there does not feel like a place for anybody, I imagine, sat around this room. So, you know, if there is that discussion, Alison, about what the direction is, really welcome an update on on the progress around that one. Because, you know, some health and safety is sometimes not considered to be very sexy. It's damn important, isn't it really? We we need that kind of support for the organization, isn't it? So, yeah, where where are you going with that one and what your thoughts are? But, yeah, we might have to be a little bit ambitious and slightly odd about what we approach you with.
Yeah, the only thing, just just one thing before it's published, the the near miss reporting on page fifty four, it's got a different number than sixty seven. So just it just.
Brian.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Is Dean's apologies, I haven't read the document yet, but it's tax on crews in the documents, tax on park crews.
Yes.
Separate report, is it? So is there a correlation between, for example, where there's no injury or damage to is it being recorded separately or is that a near miss? How are we differentiating that work, the potential for serious harm?
He's referencing the report in around probably the two Welsh services doing a slightly different, different differently to ourselves. So we've had that conversation with the team in terms of, do we now include that as part of this? Rather than a separate report encapsulated into one, I think it makes a bit more sense to have it in one report.
So as a personal view, you know, whether it's a separate report or it's included on 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 relax, but seeing it together, I think would be really useful. You know, there's a huge campaign, wasn't there, kind of three or four years ago, Welsh Government around that salt on emergency services? We know South Wales were an outlier at the time. So putting that together and understanding it and actually understanding some of the risk around that, and if we want to do some media around it, law and the impact around it. Certainly we saw it around Bonfire Night, I think we particularly have every launching fireworks. That's, you know, if we can look at that, it'd be really helpful.
Thanks, Chair. Just a comment and question, my missing notes and health and safety workup advice and your thought. Has there been anything to celebrate fifty years of health and safety around, you know, because I hope that's safety workup, I think has been really, really important. Fire service is a pretty safe organization, safe sector compared to the environment it operates in, there's quite regulated structure. So I think that's a that's missing. So I think the most dangerous occupation, you know, it's North Sea fishing or something.
By farms.
Farmers.
Farmers, anyone with a also a port with trucks as well, isn't it? So, yeah, that'd be just really useful to know if there was something that we could do on on the back of it.
Laura's Googling, I'll be saying.
I think that's a really good hook though, isn't it, to launch a campaign around the near miss report?
Yeah.
You know, to 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 encourage, you know, on the fifty years on progress has been made, but this is what to do.
And in some ways, health and safety becomes a derogatory term, doesn't it, in general life? Oh, I can't do this because health and safety. But actually, as Dave and you've justified, it's really, really important. And it's there for a really good reason. And sometimes I think in recent years, it's become seen as like almost woke really to be worried about health and safety. So something positive on the hook of, you know, the legislation and how seriously we take it and why we need people to report would be really good, I think.
And just the corals that, one of the things that I always thought me about fire service was that most of you, if you're making widgets in a factory, you get to completely control the environment. Fire service also great environment because everyone else is fire. Sounds and even police is pretty rough. So I think that's even great success that that environment, those people that are better prepared in other people's environments as opposed to just operating at the station. Though our accidents within came with this acceleration outside of kitchens.
The kitchens. Anything else to Dean, if you can, thank you for what you're doing. It's really important. I think we kind of from that on, you know, some really, really good talk. I think the fact that you've seen increased levels of reporting is always a really positive. If you've got a long form directly, you know, that is, but we'll take that as it is. We've got that increased level of reporting is a is a positive place for place to be with. So thank you. That's really appreciated. So moving on to the studio, this report there.
That 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 would be me as well personally. Um, this this report is to provide a note of favour, the strategic risk register. We currently mainly within the organisation. Uh, for the purposes of the report, strategic risk is uh. Potential occurrence that could adversely impact our ability to deliver our statutory duties. It's important to note that what underpins this, we have departmental risk register as well at a more local level. We've obviously got two tiers of conversation we have there where some of the departmental risk can occasionally be morphed into a strategic risk if they start becoming overwhelming. Uh, but obviously some of them are taken down from strategic risk to these departmental risks if they're deeply less of risk to the robustness uh, there. The report itself provides an introduction to start with the origin, I think, of these risks. It talks about obviously senior managers and subject matter leads, uh, being not only conversations with their team, up in the current environment, but. Um, obviously they're meeting with P S, colleagues, uh, risk groups, working groups and local resilience forums. Make sure we've got a really broad perspective of risks that obviously may affect our communities and how they impact us as an organisation. Um, so to do the strategic risks on on a quarterly basis. So you'll have a risk owner that tends to sit on the executive leadership team. And they'll be, they'll oversee that risk of advice scores in terms of how likely that event is to occur and how um, the impact on that event should happen. Uh, what underpins that there is a list of mitigations where tend to be owned within departments. The updates and props against those on a quarterly basis will then obviously be, will influence the risk owners' overarching score or what they'll give. Um, and they'll obviously provide some commentary in terms of why they provided that score and where we might go from there. Uh, the report itself, there is an overview on the number of risks we currently have on the register. So you can see we have sixteen risks. Uh, that are engaged in one, then in descending order based on that that scoring matrix I talked about. Uh, twelve of them are rated as high risk at the moment, um, and and four of them are rated as medium risk. Like I said, they they are reviewed on a quarterly basis. Um, the purpose of a quarterly update in terms of exception reporting, there's an update here on any movement. So we've talked about two new strategic risks. Have been raised in the last quarter. There will have been prolonged power disruption and exposure to contaminants that they mentioned earlier in the meeting. But that new identification of contaminants, certainly in terms of risk being escalated in the bigger picture. Uh, prolonged power disruption. I know there've been national level discussions about power outage. Uh, we've obviously undertaken a tabletop exercise in house around how we would be able to mitigate that, some of the actions we could take. I I will say that our business continuity plans do underpin these risks. They're not. There's there's a lot more detail that that's in this report. This is just a a high level overview for assurance. Um, two existing strategic risks have been downgraded to departmental risks, which means that they are still being considered. But they're being considered more at departmental level. They'll tend to be owned by heads of service as opposed to members of the executive leadership team. And they have been pensions change impact and Brexit, as you can imagine, they they're still something that's relevant. They're still relevant options, but I think we've been a bit more. Comfortable discussing them at a more departmental level. No, I don't think they. For for now, they don't hold that same level of risk impact that they would have done before. And on that decision to downgrade, they would have done it in in consultation with the risk owner. Um, no departmental risk were upgraded to strategic risks this quarter. Um, it it can be. It's not often that that does happen, but again, it's like I said, it's that control measure that we have that they are being considered. The departmental risk registers. Does sit separate to this, but again, those relationships are important. And again, we can raise emerging issues out, but there's nothing this quarter. Uh, and two have been closed again, some of the risks that you can imagine is a very dynamic and live documented. Um, risks and stuff that make themselves on there, they are mitigated and actually we we if something. What we do get is really different space, we can close them. Two of them have been closed, National Fire Safety Act and inflationary pressures again. It's not to say that those things have gone away. Since it's usual, yeah. Mechanisms in place. Um, and again, um, what happens after that then is that each of the risks are broken down to this page per risk. Uh, what you're having is an if and a then statement there. So in line with maybe. Is a bit more complex than what that risk is, as you've seen the title that I talked about, if this happens, then that happens. There's a, there's a risk owner and he talks about the direction of travel on a quarterly basis, uh, whether it's that it's been increased or decreased. Um, we have current assessment of all the control divided by the risk owner. And there's a little bit of details of why that risk is on the register, what are what are we doing to mitigate that risk? Uh, and anything further that we're intending on to mitigate that risk. Um, again, it's a, it's it's a bit on a quarterly basis, but again, as I said, it's a very live document. So if something happened. Uh, or something emerging happened tomorrow or the day after, then there is a mechanism to 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 put that risk. On the register and have an alert, put these things in very, very dynamically. But this is a quarter one snapshot of where we are with it now.
Mm hmm.
And it's just to provide assurance that these things are. Your radar, it gives some assurances to the fact that they're not just normal. Mitigating actions to ensure that they're they're under control almost. Um, again, I'm happy, I'm happy to take any questions, but it's a, it's a document we want. Do you want to keep wide updates on? Again, it's a, it's a moving, it's a moving document, but um, this is just a quarter one update.
Thank you, Wayne. Um, I think your updates will be really well. Questions at all or?
Just a comment that we've raised at the, uh, the excellent about, um, on the scores. I think we should have target risk because otherwise we're just reporting what's happening. If we have a target risk. Which becomes something that we might think, for whatever reason, is a threshold. It would drive resource and activity to to bring it down. And then you could have a much more, the the risk could then be serving a greater purpose to us and that we were too looking to reduce it some structure, right? And and as soon as I read it again, I remember thinking I was going to send you something. I didn't. No, I've got it. I've made another note.
No, like I said, that that feedback's very welcome. Like I said, it it's something, absolutely. Some of some of these scores will obviously be relatively static. Some of them will have high level aspirations. To bring certainly either the risk or the the likelihood or the impact down. And I think, yeah, I completely agree, having that in there to show whether we are. How close we are to being able to mitigate that risk to the to its fullest extent. Um, I could be more than happy to do that in the next update.
And I suppose E S N's a really good example on that way, isn't it, really? And and thank you for pointing it in, because, you know, we've lived it all, my previous role, to see it coming back again now is solid all. But E S N is supposed to be in by twenty twenty five. I know they'll be shut down by then and I would never close. But actually, how much can South Wales Fire Rescue Service influence the national contract with key international security agencies? Very little. Isn't it? So it's understanding the level of risk and what the impact could be, but actually there's very little we hear can do, it's a really on a multi billion pound contract.
Hmm.
I completely agree. And and like, and as you mentioned, there are, there are others over there. We have a lot more. So I think that that target that we're we're adding, we're adding a lot of, but we had a conversation with the team. After the agenda meeting and they were all uh, more than more than happy to do that, more than happy to try and do. It's great. Actually, I was thinking by the next meeting.
Thank you.
I'm figuring if this has been discussed previously, I'm just struck that we've had a, in the organisation, obviously, there's been a major governance. Change, which in itself, any change of that stroke, that that level presents a risk, doesn't it? That doesn't mean it can't be managed and mitigated. But, you know, so we've got. I I do wonder whether there's a discussion to be had around uh, governance change. Because there's this governance change. We know that the Welsh government is looking at future governance change and about whether that should be considered by. The S L T is something that is either not regarded as a risk, doesn't get scored, but. Um, I think it's unusual to have such a significant corporate change that um, at least would be considered. Uh, and, you know, looked at as to whether that present presents a risk to the organisation's business. It could be considered discounted. But I think it's worth governance and changes to governance, future changes to governance uh, might uh, be considered. Just for discussion not here, but just.
It was certainly something that we can take offline and have a discussion around with all of the uh, the people involved in creating the risk register. I think it's. It it is a significant change, as you as you say, and and, you know, that there is next step to that change as well. And and issues around how we're formed as an organisation with all different stakeholders, perceptions of all of that. I think there is a conversation for us to have online.
Uh, I'm really told, yes, you know, and I'm just probably a couple more, just for kind of just for thoughts, because it's probably going to. Um, I'm just very mindful, Alison, around that recruitment retention around staff. Not officer posts and the difficulties that we seem to be having around that senior post. We talk about health and safety, corporate comms, finance. Just, I don't know, but just some of the niggles at the back of my head that over the last couple of weeks have seemed to come to a fall of, it seems really difficult for us at the moment. And I don't think it's just us. I think it's probably set to more generally. And then the other one for me, which is that kind of more reputational issue really, when you look at case in report, you look at the thematic reviews, H M I C. You know, we should never be constrained around protecting our reputation, but I do wonder with the amount of stuff that's coming through at the moment of. Is there a risk around our communities and our perception of South Wales Fire Rescue Service? I don't know what it is, but I I just, I don't want to kind of write risks into there, but just, you know, a bit like her state. Just worth a conversation, I think, S L T, L T level really around some of those issues on, are they great enough to form this or are we comfortable with got litigation in place?
Yeah, I think that, great points. We'll take them offline. I think that there's a conversation also as we had about what is in departmental risk registers and what's in strategic risk. Where things sit appropriately, because some of these things may already be being discussed, but at different levels, just about having.
The recruitment and retention has has actually been quite a live conversation in the in the S L T, probably in the last part, and I think probably off the back of. Uh, the group and direct, and the direct results of the recommendations you've had. I think that conversation has already begun. So I think, you know, as you, and it happening once, I think a few other departments, you mentioned there's a few rules. It's actually, I think, we have to one recruitment is starting that conversation is well. We can't fill, we have another victim, we can't fill any of this other departments. That conversation that has has begun, we're like this, I think it does warrant. Your live conversation.
Fabulous. Uh, anything else for Wayne to? Again, Wayne, really good thought. Uh, I think absolutely coming back through on uh, on that circular basis, we really hope it's kind of working. If you manage to get E S N on there, off there, I will buy you one. Honestly, I would buy you one. But, uh, yeah, I think I might retire again before that comes off. But thank you. But no, really, really good report. Thanks for that. And finally, uh, my gentlest moment papers behind the work programme is the A F A's on the far up.
Yes.
Hi. Brian, you lead your mic.
No, I just want to lead on this one.
Okay, uh, since the original proposal was approved by the commissioners, a large amount of work's been completed. By group manager Lozano and the Business Fire Safety Team. And also Laura on the media and comms team. So they've got us to the position we currently are at the moment. So work to date includes the completion of all the programme documents. Including the business case, project charter, GAN chart for ensuring that we maintain that momentum. Integrated risk assessment and the privacy impact statement. So all the background work's now been completed. Uh, with one of the first priorities was to create a communication strategy. This communication strategy is a live document which is constantly updated and includes a new A F A webpage. Which provides information, guidance on the changes for our key stakeholders. Stakeholders letters have been created, written in Welsh and English. They're currently there waiting for a release. The alarm receiving letters, again, both uh, Welsh and English, have been written and approved. The above correspondence will then be sent out both electronically with a hard copy. Uh, correspondence will be sent out to the three health boards. Shared services partnerships, all local authorities, Care Inspector Wales. Welsh Government, Further Education, including University of Wales, Cardiff University, et cetera. Community housing. The top hundred worst offenders for our A F As. And additionally, the P S Bs will be informed in person with a briefing note provided. Uh, social media messages have also been written and are ready to be sent out. These will be released once the letter's been sent to the stakeholders. And the alarm receiving centers. A press release has also been created and will be sent out following the distribution of the letters. Uh, a leaflet with a Q R code is ready to be released to the crews, to be handed out when they attend. A F A type calls. This will be live from September. A new email address has been created to allow people to respond to the co- to the correspondence at A F A inquiries at South Wales. Draft animation has been created and will be placed on our webpage and other channels. Key decisions to date. Uh, our strategy will be education and engagement. This will commence in the first week of Sep- uh, September. Issues and challenges. Uh, issue which we're facing is just the high level workload by some of the teams, uh, media and comms, one of those. Obviously, there's a large number of projects ongoing within the service. Uh, with significant work streams. Consideration during this period is getting the information out to our communities in languages other than English and Welsh. Uh, our website, however, does have a recite me facility, which allows anyone visiting our website. To change the English or Welsh pages into any other language that they can uh, understand and follow. So our next actions. Uh, webpage, as I say, it's been live, is now live. Uh. Our next real phase now is to get the letters out to the alarm receiving centers on our key stakeholders. We will release the minor animation. There's just a little bit of work to do on that regard. I will meet in today to look at radio advertising in our service area. Uh, we will look to start responding to inquiries from members of the committees and stakeholders. That will be in September. And we will plan to have face to face meetings and presentations with those stakeholders who want to meet with us. Uh, and we look to do that from October to December.
So that is the update. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Brian? I have no questions. And it was a verbal update today, but henceforth it'll be a sort of concise written report um, for for each subsequent meeting.
Yes, thank you. Um, gosh, I filled the page writing all that down, Mike. So thank you very much indeed. I did note. Um, at the last meeting about the issue for external engagement and um. Consultation. So I clearly made lots of lists here. I I'm very pleased to see that that is, you know. Uppermost in what's happening because we need to get this information out there. We need to find out what people think about it. And then we need to respond to those responses and um, and ameliorate. Uh, as necessary, but, you know, this looks a very good. Covering the ground. Of course, we've got our meeting with the Welsh Government tomorrow and they will want to know what we're doing with this. So we've got plenty to to go back and say. Um, but, you know, if I could. Stress that it would be very useful to have things written down next time. Um, and also, uh, again, you know, we want to know how we're acting upon. Because it's all right, you know, going out asking people, but what are we doing when they tell us? Okay, that's really an important part of consultation. Thank you, Chair.
If you'd offer a a opportunity to fill that gap because of your meeting tomorrow, uh, we had a service review board yesterday and there was a highlight report that went to that. I'm sure that Mike wouldn't mind tweaking that with what's said today and providing that to you. Be a meeting.
That would be very helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions at all? Just let me say thank you for the work then today. Uh, obviously keep that work, it's right in the middle of our terms of reference, but more importantly that this is around. Releasing capacity in the fire service to, uh, you know, look at the the role more broadly and also increase the training and the skill level. So it's really important work to get to that point. I know we've got, you know, we'll start some challenges to get there, but feels like really good progress. So Mike, Brian and the team, thank you very much for that. And and Laura, certainly for the corporate comms being, I I am interested in what the animation looks like.
Yes, I know.
But thank you, Laura. Thank you all. Right, final, uh, agenda on here, I think, um, is just around the uh, uh, um, uh, work. Programme going forward. Any questions at all?
No, just to just to say that obviously since the last meeting, we talked about updating it and taking away things that have passed and and obviously confirmation that the areas that were in. Uh, on the on the forward work plan for August have all been on the agenda that we talked about today. So we're on track then for the next meeting in September with the areas that are focused. And you can see there that at every meeting moving forwards towards um, the the. And you can see there that at every meeting moving forwards towards um that the if they go day is an update in relation to the. Basically, so we're bringing that back to it to each of the meetings in which you form in the future.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, that would be really helpful. Okay, any questions or work plans?
Happy.
Yep. Thank you very much. Uh, and any other business? I've not been notified of anything, so kind of is going to put out that how now I will be deeply disappointed. No, and that goes, thank you all for the work to get to this point. Uh, really good papers today. Uh, and thank you for the update. And you have a bear?
Thank you.
Oh, it's a three hour schedule.
Yeah, I'm seeing if I can. I love to love each other. Yeah.